Good evening, all. It's a party here on November 8th, the annual joint meeting of the Village Board to my right and the School Board to my left. And we have a bunch of folks here in the audience as well, including Mary Fox Alter, the Superintendent of Schools, here for what will painfully be the last, have I heard, joint meetings, but we're going to invite you every year.
I can't remember not going to them.
And we have John Chow here, and who else am I missing?
Dr. Tina D'Sa, our incoming superintendent.
Oh, hey! All right, so how many, how many joint meetings has it been, Mary? Thirty?
And if you're going to speak, get up to the microphone, please, so we can hear you at home.
I can't remember. I just always remember coming to them. But I also think it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's so unique to Pleasantville that we do this. I think it's great. So I want to thank the village for that, and obviously, my Board of Education for doing this, because it's just in everyone's best interest. It's just a wonderful opportunity. And if you have a chance to go visit our website, you will see a wonderful picture of Peter and me at the Ragamah Parade, where he asked Julie to get on top of the truck to take a picture. So again, another joint statement about the things we do in this small village. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Welcome, Tina D'Sa. Hopefully, you're here for 30 years. All right. Let's see here. We're also on Zoom, and when we get to the period of time when we're encouraging folks to ask questions, anybody on Zoom can also weigh in and raise their hand. But first item on our agenda was just a quick overview of the COVID status. Certainly, from the village side, these last six weeks have been way better than the couple of months before them. We're currently in the happy circumstance that we have within the village of Pleasantville, somewhat smaller than the school district, but within the village, currently only two active cases, and we've had no new cases in the last few days. Cumulatively, since they started counting, we've had 847. So I don't want anyone to feel as though that means that it ain't around, because countywide, there are something like 1,200 active cases and 100 or more every new day. So if folks can keep wearing masks as we are and get vaccinated whenever they can, early and often, that will help. Do you want to report on the school COVID story?
We have been doing surveillance testing, and that started in mid-September. And to my knowledge, to date, doing the surveillance testing, we have not had one positive.
Not a single one?
Not in surveillance testing, no. Which is, which is excellent, and I hope it continues.
And what does that mean? What percentage of people are tested?
Okay, so people in the beginning of the school year were asked to volunteer. Mary, would you like to speak about this?
So Pleasantville, we sent out a survey and asked our parents, and I have a number of my parents here, of course, if they wanted to participate in surveillance testing. We had a very high response to that, people eager to do that. A little tricky navigating the surveillance testing and what they do. We, you have to partner with the lab, and it's called Quadrant Labs, and they do a pool-based. It's a, it's like a little swab. It looks like a lollipop. They wipe both sides of your cheek. They pool it with 12 other, they send it to the lab, and then they test the pool. So we've been doing it since the last week. They did a general of everyone who wanted to be part of it, almost 60% of the population of the school district. Obviously, more at the Bedford Road School, where we have unvaccinated students than at the high school, but still a significant participation rate. And after that general participation, we have been doing 20% of that group every week, including staff. So it's been excellent. It's been very smooth. I want to give a huge shout out to John Chow, who was orchestrating that. And again, our friends at the county, the Westchester County Medical Center, have been fantastic partners in doing this. So we, not that anyone ever wants to go out and get COVID. I don't mean to say I'm happy that the results are coming together, because it really does mean that all the risk mitigation layers are working, and that was our whole point in doing this. So we have this grant through the county until the end of the year, until the end of December. So tomorrow is another day for surveillance testing, and I'll be sending out a K-12 alert at the end of the week. But it'll be interesting now, because Halloween is over, usually two weeks after an event, and we'll see if there is a spike in any cases. But here's hoping all the good work we've been doing in the village and in the county really comes forth. And I want to thank all the parents and community members for their hard work.
Thank you, Mary.
In our masked world, it's been Halloween for 18 months, sir. We have re-engaged Panther Club. I think overall successfully. That has been, I think, well-received after being out of business last year. And likewise, our after-school programs were following the same guidelines that folks at the school established with kids and staff members masked. And same story with masks on fields. We're not currently requiring masks on fields, and that's true for the school district as well.
Correct.
Neither one of us have a health department, and so we're tracking the advice we get from the health department. Anything to add to that?
I don't have any.
No, we're just, we're thrilled. We're thrilled to have the Panther Club back at the Bedford Road School. We had over 100 families, which shows the great need. And again, it's another example of the partnership between the village and the school district.
Yeah. Right back at you. The folks at BRS have been great, I will say. On our behalf, I think we are the only municipality that runs a program of this kind. Is that your belief, Eric?
That's true. One other municipality has a after-school program, but about a third of the size of the program we run. We are a little bit smaller enrollment-wise this year due to space limitations, but there was just a huge demand for it. And it was something early on that I think we all identified needed to happen. So thanks to everybody.
And a shout out to Mike Newman and his team down in our rec department. Putting that back together after it fell apart in a year, it ain't such an easy thing to do. So 2020 census.
Yeah, so the mayor, by the way, is, is, is running the Zoom meeting as well, and he's doing all the camera angles. I at least have another person, right? He's got his phone. He's juggling a lot of balls.
I didn't formally introduce you to the, the meeting owl right there, which is our robotic capacity to run these meetings, both by Zoom and online.
Yeah, so currently, we're on Zoom. We're also live on TV, and we're also live on the PC TV website.
Oh, my goodness.
And it's being recorded.
It's a whole lot of live.
Yeah.
And I mean, our, our goal out of that was to say, okay, well, there are some good aspects of what happened in the world of Zoom, and can we sustain it? And, and I will say, at least so far, it's probably still a work in progress, but we've, it's been possible for folks to stay engaged and to attend meetings and comment in, without having to drag themselves down here either, because it was not possible to do it, or because they weren't yet comfortable to do so. So that's been a good thing. All right. So we got the 2020 census numbers back. The village of Pleasantville, again, this is the village, not, not the school district, showed an increase of 494 people as compared to 2010. And that reflected a, an increase of 7% relative to the rest of the county. That probably put us in the middle of the pack. Varying numbers, obviously, but there were some places that had a significant loss in population and some places that had a more dramatic gain. But one interesting piece about this is that in 2010, we've, we've, for the first time, been higher than our historic high, which was 40 years ago in 1970.
Was the highest. What was that?
7110.
7110.
Right.
And what is it now?
7513.
7513.
Right. Now, again, village, not school district.
Yeah, it's a little bit more difficult to get the school district numbers, and it usually takes six months to a year longer, just because
We're in different, people different.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's just interesting to note that, you know, people wonder, you know, what the story has been. In 1980, Pleasantville's population dropped by 5%. In 1990, Pleasantville's population dropped by 2%. And again, those were probably the years that coincided with a significant drop in population in the school district. The Roseell School got sold, you know, some retrenchment going on. Then 2000 back up 9%, 2010 minus 2%. So bounces all around.
And 2010, what was it? It was
7019.
Yep. And, and that year, the school district, because we do have the school district number for 2010, was 8213. So, you know,
You just know that?
I do.
You have your number in your backpack?
I do, yeah.
So what would you say about your enrollment story? I mean, obviously, stability in your enrollment is what you seek, right?
Right. And, and our, and it's pretty stable right now. The height, the height in terms of population of the school district was in 2008, 2009. And it was about 150 students higher than it is today. So that's when the height was.
Which is interesting. I mean, it just goes to show that, that the population of the school district, that is, the number of school kids, and the population of the community are not in lockstep, because your numbers were higher when the overall population was a bit lower.
Right. I mean, I know we do have, and I'm going to ask Mary, and I think we do have some of the numbers from some of the new developments. Would you want to speak about that? I mean, I think this would be interesting for you guys to hear.
It is, just, just to give relation to things, and I do tell this story to new staff. You know, when I first arrived in Pleasantville, the 8990 school year, we barely had 900 kids in the district. There wasn't, we had sold Roseell. There was a peak, but that was akin to what every other public school district in the region did. Some school districts sold their elementary schools, so, and you could see them today. Many of them are condos or co-ops throughout the county. Some leased them out to early childcare centers, like the Church Street School in White Plains, and then needed to bring them back in. And then we saw a huge spike, Shane's right, in the 2008 year. That was our highest level of numbers. So it's hard to, you know, figure out in many ways what would be a normal number. So right now, it's been stable, and I think the numbers where we are right now are just, for lack of a better term, just stable. That peak of eight, a little over 1,800 in 2008, 2009 was probably the largest in the school district's history. Right? So right now, we are, and we do love it, because a lot of school districts are losing enrollment. We're happy to say that we have 18 students from Dennis Lane, the Toll Brothers, young. Most of them, the vast majority of them are at the Bedford Road School, and with three pre-K students. And we have four students from the Loss. So again, happy to welcome kids into our school district and keeping that level of, you know, age, population, and diversity in the community, which is great.
And, you know, obviously, we all struggle with the balance between development and population and taxes. So
Right, but now, for the first time, we actually have real-world numbers. And so I think it's interesting just to know currently where we are.
What was the original forecast for, from the Toll Brothers for the
I would have to go ahead and look. I think it was 27-something to that effect. I mean, we're currently below that. Now, now, the, the seven affordable units are not yet occupied, and those, one might assume, are more likely to have kids in them. So we can go back and look, because all of those developments, through their site plan process, involve a school district generation study, not only generating the number of kids, but generating the taxes. So, you know, Toll Brothers is 68 units. That's 61 market rates, seven affordable. I'd say, without question, the biggest shot in the arm to the tax base since the Country Club, which was 40 years ago. Right?
It was 82.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's almost. Thanks for making me feel old, but okay.
You didn't, you just heard about it.
Yeah. Remember going to the meetings, actually.
And now you're making yourself sound old.
Thanks.
You know, so what, what's the reality? We're all in the game of trying to create stability to the extent that we can. Right? Certainly, from our standpoint, it's clear that stability doesn't mean lock it up the way it is, because as we have seen, things change around you. Just for example, as, as we all know, we lost political pharmacy. And, and, you know, that's both an individual story about a business, but it's also a broader story about what retail looks like in the world, you know, of the bigification of everything. That's going on in every possible way. I mean, it's interesting to note that 15 or so years ago, every developer that came here was talking about building ownership housing. Today, every developer that comes here to kick the Taiso project is talking about rental housing. Just changed, changed the, the market in response to the market demand. So
No, I just think it's important to keep track of all of it. I mean, because interestingly enough, when, when the Country Club came in, the community really thought a lot more school-aged children would live, that live there than ended up living there. And so to me, when I looked at a project like that, you know, you start to think, okay, the experts come in, they give a number, and it's typically lower. So we just want to, you know, trust and verify that that's continuing to be the case, because it will affect how you guys look at things moving forward.
It's all a prediction.
Right.
And, and the world is changing around us as we try to predict.
I certainly think it's interesting as to what families and people decide upon housing, because Dennis Lane, the Toll Brothers, they're multi-tiered. They don't have backyards. There aren't playgrounds. And it's interesting that, it's my Bedford Road School, I have one high school student that people chose that type of housing. So I guess we're seeing a different look when families look at housing and what they're choosing to live in. I, I love the fact, too, that they're fee, fee simple, just like Country Club. I think that's really important to mention that, and I was glad that
So they're taxed exactly like a home.
Just like a house.
That's really important.
All right. And, and, you know, as Mary already mentioned, quite a number of the school districts around us have had significant declines in enrollment. And I assume, not speaking on your behalf, the worst of all possible scenarios is big changes, right? Space, staff, layoffs, hiring, you know, all that kind of stuff. So
Yeah, no, just like taxes, you want it to be stable. Do you want to move to the next agenda item?
Okay.
I know, I know that you have a public hearing at 8:30, and you'd like to make that. And so I'm doing my best to help you out with that.
What Shane is saying is I'm talking too much. That's what's happening. All right. Well, why don't you kick off diversity and inclusion, and then I'll chime in, or any of the rest of us can.
I can, or Jill, would you like to? Or would you like me to? And you can pull up. Jill, do it.
So the district has started a process for creating a diversity, equity, inclusion, and access stakeholder committee. Mary sent out an email, was an interest form, I think it was about a week and a half ago, it went out initially, and the district is looking for, you know, groups of parents, students, community members, staff, who will bring, you know, a range of experiences, backgrounds, perspectives, to join this advisory committee. And, you know, to advise the district on various aspects of the district's work, using, really looking at it through a lens of equity and inclusion. So we're really excited. It's been something we've been talking about for a couple of months and working on the interest form and the description, and really, the purpose of the committee. But we're very excited to get it off the ground. So I think we're accepting interest forms till November 19th. And then I think the hope is that there'll be a meeting sometime in December before the holidays.
So if people or school district, you want to give a commercial for where to sign up?
I can give a commercial, yes. Please, if you're watching, please, if you're interested, we urge you to submit the interest form. You can, if you are a parent in the school district or a staff member, you can find the interest form in Apparu. And if you're a parent or staff member, you know what Apparu is. And, and if you don't know what Apparu is, then we have a link. I guess it's on our website. On the district website, there's an interest form for community members, yeah, to fill out. And students also can do it through Apparu. I'm looking at Mary.
And then, and then we do have paper copy. Do we, do we have paper copies yet in the library and at the senior center?
I don't know.
Do we know the answer to that question?
We should.
If we don't, by the time you see this rebroadcast, there will be.
Doing things through Apparu sounds fun, right?
Yeah.
Well, one of the great things about Apparu also is it translates it into many different languages.
What is Apparu?
So Apparu is the very brief. It's, it's an app, and that's how the parents and, and the staff every day fill out our, the health form. It's the COVID screening form. And also, the lunch, lunch for BRS is in there. So
It's actually very efficient. It makes it a lot easier to do this. Quick question. Is this committee going to be looking at curricula as well? Or is it more kind of staffing and student issues that they'll be?
Well, Mary, take back questions.
We are so fortunate in New York State to have a state education department that has outlined a guidance document for all of us to follow. It's, it's written by the Metro Center NYU, David Kirkland, along with input from the state education department, and it's called the Culturally Responsive Framework. It has a depth of knowledge and information, links to the Metro Center's resources. And many of my colleagues, that's the work they're doing on Superintendent's Conference Day, is unpacking the Culturally Responsive Framework and starting with how to create a warm and welcoming environment. The district, three years ago, partnered with the ADL, you know, the Anti-Defamation League, and we brought in training for our teachers, brought in training for administrators, and then they did some workshops with students in all three schools. We felt that we had hit a certain level with the ADL, and we felt that the Metro Center had a deeper dive into the Culturally Responsive Framework. And as you can tell, because David Kirkland helped write it. So we are using that document to help guide the work that we're doing. And I'm very proud of the state of New York for being really out there about that. So it will talk about, you know, teachers will be taking a look at seeing, making sure all kids have windows and doors into their identity and curriculum and different experiences. So whether or not it's the books we read in the library or the literature strand you might be doing in the high school, you might be reading, trying to teach about author's intent. And instead of using a textbook that we've used for, let's say, or a novel for 20 years, we're looking at different types of materials to do that, too. So if you haven't seen it, there's a link to the document on our website. It's an outstanding document, and it is an excellent guidance document that we're bringing people into to help us with. In addition to that, our BOSIs have actually developed a COSER, a sharing document, with resources and partners who are doing this work throughout the region. So you're encouraged to sign up and use those partnerships, and you get state aid on that. But the best part about it is that you form this action coalition, where you get to share different ideas and thoughts about approaches. And thinking together with other partners who are doing this work is really, really important. So it's going to be an exciting year. We're looking forward to it. And I'm just, hopefully, there'll be more tomorrow night. The board will hear. And a lot of this is in the board's strategic plan, which they adopted three years ago. So we're going to have a great night tomorrow night.
Thank you.
And I think, just to add on to what Mary said, I think, you know, to your question also, the committee would, could take on a range of issues. I think that they'll get together and looking at the strategic plan and the Culturally Responsive Framework. They could identify different, you know, maybe the calendar, or different things that, that are, need to be maybe looked at more closely.
You want to comment? I mean, you've been talking to Erin Ballard and her DEI group, not official village committee, but a group of our constituents and, and school district constituents, and they've been doing a lot of good stuff.
Yeah, so they, so Erin Ballard has had a DEI committee that has organized itself independently of the village. I guess the, the real point of intersection right now is the police committee, but I was going to hold off on talking about that until we dealt with police reform, but I can
Feel free to jump right in.
I can jump right in. So, okay. So we have Lou here, who's one of our, Lou Doria, who's one of our members of our new committee. So we have this unwieldy name that we need to find a way to make a little punchier. But right now, it's the Pleasantville Police Communication, Community Outreach, and Engagement Committee.
Not nearly as good as Apparu.
We're taking suggestions. If anybody has a good idea for a better name. So this is something that came out of the police reform process that was mandated by the state that we went through last year. And there was a lot of interest in having, basically, more back and forth between the community as a whole and the police department, and finding better ways to communicate, finding ways to engage. So we just had our inaugural meeting. Paul and I were both there as well. And so far, we've had two, two actions. One is to publicize the First Responders Disability Registry Form, which is something that we're hoping to put out through the PTA as well. So it does concern the district as well, which is, it's a form that allows individual households to give the police ahead of time all sorts of information about whether, you know, if they're not native English speakers, if there's somebody in the household that has a disability or a particular issue that they want the police to be aware of ahead of time. And that's already available on our website. So it's been there for a while, but the group decided that they wanted to sort of make a, a push to get it out into the public more and make people more aware. And then we're going to be meeting with our chief of police shortly to talk about where things are with the police reform process and where we're going to be going forward. So if you know of anybody who is interested in joining the committee, we're still open to new members. We have a representative of SEPTA. Is Helene Dehan is part of the committee, because that was an important voice in the, in the police reform process as well. But if there's anybody who feels like they could represent a part of the community that is somehow underrepresented, or, then we're, you know, we're more than happy to include you as well.
And if I'm getting this right, Lou Doria is the former chief in Harrison?
Yes.
Did I get that right?
Oh, and I missed, I missed, so I missed the DEI piece of this, which is that a couple of members of the DEI committee, of the independently formed DEI committee, have, are part of this new committee as well. So we're kind of embracing them in that way.
And as, as part of the police reform, worth mentioning and reminding folks, if you follow our meetings regularly, you already know this, Chief Gretzner, who's here tonight, is, is providing us and the community with a detailed quarterly update on what's going on in the police department. I encourage folks to go back with.
Yeah, no, we just had one last meeting, and that's online. And the chief gave, I don't know, a 45-minute to an hour report.
And those are all listed on our, on the village website under Police Reform.
Yeah.
I think that was the October 26th.
And it includes not, not only, you know, statistics about what's going on, but also information about new initiatives the department is, is engaged in. We've been engaged in discussion of whether we want to tackle the issue of accreditation, which is certainly appealing in concept. There, there's a cost attached to it. One takeaway worth reminding everyone is lock your cars. We've had, we've had a bunch of cars stolen, but virtually, every one of them has been unlocked with the keys in the car. So this is an easy problem to solve. And let me also say that if you don't solve it, you're harming all of us, because Because the guys that are doing this are doing this all over the region. And if they get the idea that Pleasantville is a place where there are a whole lot of cars that are unlocked and, and the keys are in them, they keep coming back. So if they find most people's cars are locked and they don't have the keys in them, they'll go somewhere else. That's got weird. So let me just back up briefly. We skipped one and we don't even spend a lot of time on a sort of a budget fiscal update on the village side. A year ago, we ratcheted back all of our expectations in terms of revenue based on the COVID situation. We have ended up substantially better than we expected. In particular, we had anticipated a steep drop in sales tax revenue, as perhaps you guys did too, because you get a piece of it. Indeed, the sales tax revenue has been above pre-pandemic levels. That may be at the expense of New York City, which has seen a steep drop. You've got all these people who used to spend much of their day and some of their money in New York or doing it here, but.
So for us, if you go back to last year, I don't know if you all remember, but the state was threatening to cut aid to, to schools, foundation aid by up to about twenty percent. So when we were putting our budget together, we really had to think long and hard about, you know, our curriculum, our academic program, and how we were going to try and fund it if in fact New York State did cut back. And the, the decision kept, kept getting pushed. So it got pushed well past the budget vote, you know, and into the summer and even into the fall. And we kept waiting and waiting and waiting. So what we did was we allocated, you know, extra money in our budget just in case, expecting those cuts, so that we could offer the, the programs that, you know, we had told the community we were going to offer. And then we waited to see. In the end, New York State didn't make any cuts. They kept, they kept the budget the way it was actually written. And so that allows us potentially, and we can talk about this when we get to facilities, to have some, some one-time expenses to, to improve certain aspects of the physical facility of our school. In terms of next year, we're supposed to be getting additional foundation aid. Now, we have a new governor and we have, so we don't know how that negotiation process is going to be. We don't know economically where we're going to be as inflation starts. But we're, we're hopeful that we will, that the promised aid and the promised increase in aid will happen. I don't know if there's anything that John Chow or Assistant Superintendent of Business would like to add to that. I don't mean to put you on the spot. You're good? You might want to just come up and say hi so we can get you on camera. So those who don't know who you are, know who you are. This is John Chow.
John Chow, I just arrived here. I'm very happy to be in Pleasantville, working with our school board and especially Mary and in the future with Tina. And as far as the state is concerned, I think this is promised by the governor to restore the, the foundation aid to the, the amount that we're supposed to be getting. And this is going to be phased in two years. So we're, we're hopeful that this will happen.
Thank you.
So, I mean, without ringing on, on the school district's grade, because it's great for all of us. It's all of our tax dollars. On the village side, there's been no increase of any kind to the paltry sum we get for more than twelve years. Not a dime, not a dollar.
No, I know. And actually, you guys were successful in the mayor's council in lobbying, because actually Cuomo had come back and said, because you get so little, we are just going to cut all of it. And you were successful in killing that.
Yeah, I mean, run like a fox, which is, you know, we all feel great that we sustained a program that hasn't changed a dime in twelve years. Instead of feeling great because we actually got a dime, so. And then worth noting, the village is getting about eight hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. Four hundred thousand this year, four hundred thousand next year. There are some significant limitations on how it can be used, although this discussion in Washington about whether those limitations may actually be changed a bit. You guys get ARPA funds too.
Yes, and I think we'll save that until we get to the facilities portion of the meeting, just to kind of put things in neat little boxes. And I can have, and when we get there, I'll have Mike and Angela get that report.
We already messed up the neat little boxes.
Would you like us to move to facilities now or?
Absolutely not. We're lockstep orderly. Number six was marijuana legalization. We don't need to talk too much about it. Hours have been spent talking about it. As we all know, marijuana was legalized by New York State, various constraints attached to that. And included in that was the option for every municipality to opt out if they so chose from the possibility of having a local dispensary, that is a retail store, and/or a local consumption lounge. If you opt out by December thirty-one, you can opt in at a future point. If you don't opt out by December thirty-one, you're in for the rest of time. There's a lot to be said about it. There are many different dimensions of it. The issue, depending on, on, on your viewpoint, is more complicated than perhaps it, it first seems. But we've scheduled a, a public hearing two weeks from today, the twenty-second, on a board resolution to opt out of both dispensaries and lounges.
Yeah, a lot of the reason that, that we, in terms of the school board and, and Pleasantville Strong in addition are, were in favor of waiting is because there aren't any regulations yet for what these types of businesses would look like. And, and we just think it would be most prudent to wait and see what the rules are around. Advertising in the community, right? So, you know, because we have concerns about the, our youth being exposed to these things. And so we feel, we felt like it was really important. And, and so thank you for listening and considering. And, you know, just, it seems the, the best course of action just to wait and see what the regulations are. And we can always opt back in or have a vote and see what people really want or whatever later on. But at least for now, we can, we can be conservative and wait and see what the rules will be regarding these businesses in our community. So thank you for considering that.
Look, I, I think we're sympathetic to all of that. And obviously, you know, the, the challenge we all confront and which future boards will confront is as societal change occurs, how do we respond to it? So as you have already pointed out, this decision addresses the question right now. It doesn't mean that it's that way forever. And if some future board, or this board in some future time feels differently about it, that committee discussion can be.
But we all feel the same way, Angela.
Let, let me also say, although there's a tax revenue piece to it, that was never the issue for, for us at all. Okay, village development update, current and proposed developments. As, as you all see, the project at Seventy Memorial has arisen. About seventy-eight apartments. Seventy-nine apartments. Two, two, two important things to note. One is, as, as some of you already know, went through a very deliberative process a few years ago to change the zoning in that one block bounded by Bedford, Memorial Plaza, Manville and Cooley, to allow four-story buildings, whereas everywhere else in the, in the central business district, it's always been three. The former Chase building, now Chase moved out of it, is actually five stories. And that's a pre-existing non-conforming building. By the way, the issue we confronted on that site in particular is that it's, as you recall, there was a, a mountain of a rock there with a building on top that was literally molding with nobody in it. And, and so our zoning code, as it should, says, if you build something new there that has housing, it has to have parking. And so what was required in order to build something there was to knock down the mountain. And that was what was done, so.
Put the parking underneath.
How many stages is?
One forty, one twenty-five.
There are three levels of parking below. The village is, is going to in the end have fifteen of them in perpetuity and another ten that we're going to pay for. And at the developer's expense, a, I think quite beautiful landscape walkway will connect Memorial Plaza to Cooley Street. So that after decades of all of us squeezing past the post office trucks, there will be a really great connector. And Cooley Street, where the former Mediterranean is, will be pushed through and become a full two-way through street, again at developer expense. All the in and out of the parking garage is off Cooley. So I'm, I'm.
Cooley was going to be one way from Bedford to Manville. It's going to be two-way?
It's two-way, although as it is now, when you come to the corner by the Art of Wine, it will be right turn only. Does everyone respect that? Perhaps not, but two-way.
Oh, and then one, one question, and I, I think you can explain this pretty well. Sometimes when people see the building from the Cooley side as opposed to the Memorial Plaza side, it's taller from the Cooley side. Can you explain how that works?
Well, there's, the, the zoning code, like all zoning codes, establishes the average mean grade. And the height of a building is based on the average mean grade, because that site drops off. It's essentially a five-star building at that side. So, look, there are pros and cons to everything. But I can tell you, having looked at this for a very long time, you cannot take pieces of your downtown and leave them undeveloped.
And then in terms of parking spots, we end up with, there with what, something like forty more parking spots than the apartments will require?
Yeah, he, he has built more parking than is required by the zoning code. And honestly, likely more parking than is required by the needs of the project. It's going to be a rental project, ten percent set aside for affordable. The rest of the apartments are going to be, I think, quite beautiful and no doubt quite expensive.
And retail on the ground.
And retail on the ground floor, commercial facing Memorial Plaza.
So you want to talk about the building code in terms of if anybody builds more than ten units, they have to set aside one for every ten for affordable?
We have a ten percent set aside, requiring that if a, a new project is built, and this was the case for Toll Brothers, sixty-eight units, seven affordable, a ten percent set aside. And, and the definition of affordable is established by the Housing and Urban Development Guidelines at eighty percent of the average median income for the size the unit is. Couple of other things worth everyone being aware of. We're obviously unsure about what will next happen with, with the spaces that are now vacated, like the pharmacy. But we have reason to believe that the new owner, Silverman Realty, which has a sign posted on the front, in, intends to gussy things up a bit, but, but seeks a new retail tenant. That would be great. As of the moment, no, no knowledge of what that might be. Happy to report, not that anyone asked, that by all report, the bakery is going to open before Thanksgiving. It's a question I get a lot, and I, I just ask, Robert Hughes, our building inspector.
What about the building on, the other building on Washington? Was it ninety, the one next to?
Ninety-eight, Washington.
Yeah, what's going on there?
So it looks like the county's going to take it over.
Looks like the county's going to take it over.
I thought they did take it over.
They bought it and then, didn't they buy it and then sell it to fulfill the requirement for?
Yeah, there, there is a private affordable housing developer involved. It, it may, but the, the county re-engaged itself in the process since a lot of the money was originally county money in that, in the housing settlement, to try to push that thing to the, to, to the finish line and get it occupied, so.
You know, on like, what, fifteen years of that building?
I mean, the building has a very long history. The, the affordable housing use of it, it went into foreclosure. There were all kinds of grounds. But the county bought it and then flipped it for affordable housing in the last year of the Astorino administration, which was, what, twenty sixteen?
Right, and that, that was the last piece of the seven fifty that we needed for the suit?
It was. So, I mean, a massively frustrating story. But I think we've got some, some allies in the county, including our former mayor, John Nona, who's also engaged in the process. So I, I, I can't estimate when it will happen, but I'm optimistic that finally it's headed in, in the right direction.
He's the county attorney, just so people don't know.
As you also know, there's a project going up at the former Laduka Auto Site. That was a project as of right, no variances. That will be also a rental project. I don't think it's aiming quite as high-end as the Seventy Memorial Project. That was a contaminated site. It was on the New York State brownfield. The remediation of the contamination was part of that process. So then the other thing I wanted everyone to be aware of is that at the moment, it is decidedly unclear what might happen. But Bank of New York, for many decades, has owned a, a, a very large building, a hundred and some thousand square feet behind Foxwood and has now sold it.
What is that zone does?
That's campus office.
It's not the engineering building. It's the.
Well, the engineering building may in the end be part of the mix. We don't know. I, I, if I'm a betting man, which I normally am not, the, I think it likely that we will get a proposal for a zoning change for some other use. There's a lot of complexity to that site, a lot of moving parts, a lot of crossements, a lot of, of, of steep grades and the like. And so it, it's, it will be a complicated venture. And at the moment, I, I can report that, you know, we've had some developers come and talk to us and kick the tires. Obviously, you know, just in the category of we're looking at this, what are the, what are the issues from your standpoint? And obviously can't speak for what might happen i- if we were to get a formal application. But it, it isn't an easy project. And, and a few of those folks who have kicked the tires of it have, have decided that. By the same token, it's, it's a big parcel in a very weird place.
Long, complicated. Is it only accessed through Foxwood?
And the only access is across property that Foxwood owns, although there is a de- reason. So it's complicated.
Mr. Mayor, going back to Seventy Memorial, very quickly. So am I correct in, in recollection that four of the apartments in there are three-bedroom?
I think that's right. Do you recall, Eric? I think that's about right, the top four corners.
Do we know in terms of the Laduka property, I know what the size of the apartments there are?
We do. I don't have it at, at hand, but that was all part of the site plan approval, so we can get you that. All right. Local and real estate, local and regional real estate trends, obviously. Residential real estate in Pleasantville, New York and places like it have been very, very hot. I certainly have spoken to some folks who were not planning to sell now, who have accelerated their plans. Again, people will do what people do. It will obviously have an impact on all of us. But I'm also happy to report that I talked to lots of people who are, are here to stay for, for the long haul. So, I mean, I don't, what do you guys hear?
One, one good piece of this too, I mean, this is all very complicated, right? But one good piece of this that's important to remember is that we have a very vibrant downtown. And we know from studies that have been done that an important part of maintaining a vibrant downtown is having a lot of foot traffic. So one upside to having these developments downtown is that it's a boost, you know, to our businesses. Is likely to, you know, give them a better future as well.
The result of really the Jacob Burns coming in and the master plan that was done that established these districts, it took years, but we're actually now seeing that all come to pass. So other than the one block that Peter was describing, everything else that's happened has been according to, as of right, and according to that master plan. So it's sort of this long, you start, it's like a turning a ship, right? You start something and fifteen, twenty years later, you start to see the results of that.
Jacob Burns opened twenty-five years ago.
It's the twentieth anniversary. So, you know, we don't get to decide when people decide to sell a property.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely turnover and, and, you know, we're seeing it in BRS. There's younger families moving in with younger kids and, you know, there, there will be turnover, but it, it's.
It's the rite of passage. My neighborhood, I think, there's like eight new families.
I'm sorry, my, my neighborhood, I think there's.
I'm sorry, my, my neighborhood, I think there's like eight properties that have turned over in the last year with young children.
I've lived in my neighborhood long enough to have been through several, two, two phases of lots of kids, no kids, lots of kids, no kids. We're currently in a little bit of a kid lull at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly a seller's market. And houses are not staying. I mean, if you look at when they're listed, when, um, they're going into contract, it's a relatively short amount of time.
Look, think, think.
We live in a cool place.
Things are constantly changing and, and, and we have control, all of us do, of, of some of the levers, but not many of them. And people will decide when they want to move and people will decide what kind of housing they want to live in. And, and those who might develop new housing are trying to respond to all those, all those demands. And, and, um, so, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, um, Alfred North Whitehead said something like the job of leadership is to, is to, uh, provide stability among change and to provide change among stability, something to that effect. All true, right? It's, it's, uh, it is crystal clear that communities get in trouble when they don't change.
I, I think it's a little bit important to, to note though, is that cha- change is scary at times, is difficult. But I think what's important is that we have a really strong foundation of what Pleasantville is. Like our schools are amazing, uh, Blue Ribbon, this, congratulations to the school, Blue Ribbon Schools. Why wouldn't parents want to bring their kids here?
Says Pleasantville High School alum, wearing a panther mask.
Athletics, amazing teams. We've had state championship teams. We have our football team that's playing in the sectional finals this Friday. And when you go to those games, you see kids, you see adults, you see alumni.
It's actually Saturday, sorry, Saturday at four P M. In Arlington High School, yes.
So you, you know, there's that foundation of, of unity, of community, of supporting each other, supporting the local businesses. I set up a local event this year for the businesses and it was the first time we did something like that and the community came out. So although there is change, but I think that there's also so much of a, of a foundation of a root that we have that makes this community still that tight-knit community. I saw something on a Facebook group on Halloween that there was a parent who wanted some help to, to almost recreating Halloween for their child the next day. And the amount of people that commented there and parents have said, I'll do it, come by my house. That just shows you what this village is all about. So yes, there is change that can come. But as long as we hold the roots and we continue to install these values that my parents taught in me when I was a child, my professors, my teachers, my, my superintendents taught in us as children. We can continue to hold our, our community and hold our identity that's always made this village really, really special place to be. So I think that's always really important because, you know, we do get too concerned with there's so much change happening. Yes, there is, but we can control, you know, the heart of our community. So I think that's something to always keep in mind.
I think that's very well said. Thank you. I agree.
While you're on it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really push this. So arts, athletics, academics, do you want to talk about arts too?
Well, we have this new art committee. I don't know if we've talked about that at all. But we have so many great artists in, who live in Pleasantville and a group of them just volunteered, um, to put together a, a committee to look at art in public spaces. So their first project is going to be in Jackson Alley, um, off of Wheeler and.
Ten years too late for me.
A little too late for you.
We had to wait till Shane.
But they are putting out a public call to artists in, I believe, the lower Hudson Valley. So local, but in a slightly broadly defined way, um, for, uh, a public art project or projects plural that will, will be, um, along there. So, um, at the same time that, you know, development is happening and, you know, we have new restaurants and things like that. We're also, and we're continuing to host events that keep the spirit of Pleasantville. We're, you know, we're working on the cultural angle of things. Well, I say we, um, in this case, we were just lucky, um, that.
As we are often.
Volunteer to take this on. So, yeah.
It's also worth noting, you know, obviously I, I've lived here a very long time. I've been the mayor a long time. And, and I hear from lots of folks on, on all sides of the issues. And, you know, there, there's a sense among s- some that, you know, it ain't like it used to be. Well, that, that perhaps is true, but just as Paul indicated, there are a lot of aspects of it that are. And, uh, that's certainly true in the schools amid change. And, um, you know, I end up talking to some of the folks that have moved here and, and they moved here for whatever reason. Ran an apartment, bought a house, bought a condo, whatever, whatever it was. And, uh, they felt the zen of the place and, you know, they're here to, to contribute to it and, and are doing so. So does that mean everybody? No, you know, that was true in nineteen fifty. So, uh, we don't live in the world we lived in before. You know, I'm the guy that called to find out how much it would cost to buy Barclays hardware when it was for sale in nineteen eighty-six, uh, even though I know nothing about it.
That's where May Abbey is now. For people who don't know, yes. And his former office.
Yeah.
Actually, he was on the second floor of that.
Just to get back to, just one thing I wanted to say about the art committee, that sounds amazing. Uh, it's really exciting. And I just, since we're the school board, um, I just wondered if they might at some point consider featuring students. We had.
I'm sure they would, yeah.
Amazing art program.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, um, they would and I'm happy.
Well, and Greg is part of the, uh, Greg Nemec is part of.
Yeah, Greg is on the committee, exactly.
I think their angle right now with this initial project is professional artist.
Sure.
And, and there's a funding question that will land on our laps of before too terribly long.
There's other parts of the village that, that.
Yes.
Could use some beautification, maybe around the train station area, the, you know, there's, I'm sure there's.
If the stars align and we ever get our civic space, then that would be a, a good canvas for students.
All right. So in that connection, you know, the next piece, we've, we've talked at length about the, of the Mandville Road project, which would involve closing the slip lane, the so-called slip lane out of Mandville, out of Memorial Plaza. And then the potential to create a civic space slash park in the space remaining. All that got put on hold. We got a year extension on the, uh, state grant that was, uh, provided for pedestrian improvements on, on Mandville Road. Uh, tonight we have a resolution to, uh, go out to bid on the Mandville Road piece of it, uh, which is what we have to do, or we will lose the million six. Is it million six now?
Oh, from one point four?
Yes, in this, in this state grant. Uh, so we'll see what numbers we get back.
Well, and in addition to that, you all probably noticed that, um, a, uh, infrastructure package with five hundred and fifty billion dollars of new spending was just passed. Included in there is money for both roads and pedestrian safety. Um, and a big chunk of that is coming to New York State. So we're trying to determine whether there's any way that this could qualify for that. Obviously shovel-ready projects are the most likely to get funded.
I mean, we're, we're nervous that we has, have been for a while, not just on this, but on every other project, including our pool, about what have seemed like stratospheric increases in prices. Demand, supply chain, gouging, you, you name it, whatever it may be.
I'm sure you guys know about that.
Stay tuned. We had on here concerns about cell coverage. I know that has been a subject. Michael, you had.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I'll just take a couple of minutes here to explain. So it's so great to meet some of you who I haven't met, um, tonight, and it's, it's lovely to see this joint venture. Uh, this issue came to my attention through, uh, Kerry Albam, whom I see in the back here, and who started a Facebook group, uh, called Pleasantville for Better, Better Cell Service. And I congratulate you, Kerry, on being straightforward with the name of your group.
Unlike our police committee.
That's right. So, and it currently has a hundred and fifty-seven members and generated interest immediately. Uh, the primary issue that, that these constituents bring to our attention is the cell network capacity, uh, in the main village and around the schools and, and central business district. And there are some complaints also in the outskirts of town, but, but I was surprised to learn that most of the complaints really come from the center. And it seems that the current infrastructure was built for coverage, uh, but not necessarily capacity. And certainly not the capacity needs that we have now with four G, five G and all the data that our teenagers are streaming constantly, right, uh, on, on their phones.
Come on, it's not just teenagers.
Not just teenagers, okay, I'm sorry. That was a cheap, that was a cheap shot, I'm sorry. And, um, of course, the topography here, uh, is, is a challenge as well with being in a, a river valley and having, uh, having our trees and hills that, that we love, but may not allow, uh, signals to get everywhere we need, we need them to be. Uh, the county and other, and other places that have studied this, uh, their main issue is safety. And so that's the number one issue. Things like emergency response for places, people who don't have landlines, which isn't every day is more and more people, connecting with children at school, connecting with children when they're at large events where everyone is using their phone at the same time, something like our music festival. A recent story that had never occurred to me is, uh, was, it was a, a family who was at Nana Hagan Park right near the pool and was trying to access, uh, their daughter's a blood sugar monitor, which is through an app. And they were new to town and they didn't have a, didn't have coverage. And so, you know, these, that was something that just never occurred to me, but so many things are cloud-based and app-based that there are new safety concerns that, that, you know, we wouldn't even have thought of before. There's of course also, also the issue of, of productivity, um, which is second to safety, but is nonetheless very important for people, um, who are, who are working. So what's to be done? I think first is data gathering and, and to, to learn, um, possibly by working with a consultant, such as Cityscape, which Northern Westchester municipalities have, have partnered with, uh, just to learn, um, what the situation really is right now in our area, uh, to see if, uh, to see where, where we stand in relation to other, um, you know, o- other, other, um, peer, uh, sort of municipalities. And, uh, and then we'll go from there. And, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, if Kerry wants to represent his group, maybe would that, would that?
Sure.
Say something now or would you rather have that be later?
No, fine, come on up.
Or, or if I've covered it, Kerry, then.
This is quite an aberration with all these cameras.
That's why you get cell service.
Yes, exactly.
And maybe just for the record, just give your name and address.
Sure, uh, Kerry Albam, eleven Tyoga Lane, Pleasantville. So first of all, thank you, Mayor, Village Board, Board of Education. I'm glad we're all here talking about the issue. And by no means am I an expert on the issue. But I think a good first step, like Michael said, is to get an unbiased study on if there's an issue and what the issues are, you know, where the dead spots are and what can be done about it, if anything. Cause I think, um, you know, we're, obviously we're not the only town and village with this issue. But it has become a problem, especially like Michael said, around safety, I think. Safety around the schools is hard to use data around the school. It's hard to use data in the village. And part of the reason I started this group was a little selfish. I was trying to use my Pango app in town and I couldn't get online. Well, now you're getting right to the right. So I was frustrated, so I walked into Sundance and then I came out and I got a ticket. You know, so, but I've seen over the last. Thank you for your support of the village. Yes. But I've seen over the last one or two years, um, the service go down. And again, I'm not an expert, but in speaking with consultants in local towns, they think, they seem to think it's the infrastructure not keeping up with the demand. So the more capacity we use, the, the decrease in coverage happens. So it gets worse and worse over time. So right now we might have data problems. In the near future, we might not be able to make calls. And this is difficult because fifty percent of the U S doesn't even have a landline anymore. And that's always, that's only going to get a higher percentage, especially in this town. So it's a good idea to try to get in front of it, like the other Northern Westchester towns are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One of the issues we confront is that it's private investment that drives it. These are not, um, by and large, pub- public facilities. And nobody, uh, nobody wants antennas and towers in their neighborhood. So, um, you know, that may change over time, but we, we have, as, as you know, a, a cell tower that's, uh, down at the end of Caseldon Street. And, um, that was a contentious matter when it was first proposed. Got what? Are there four carriers on there now, Eric? But so part of that may be that we, they, they need more throughput, right? Well, I, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. Yeah. We, you know, we don't know what we need. And I think there might be some small cell sites we can use rather than the bigger macro sites. We just don't know yet. And I think the, um, the public view on this may have changed a little bit as far as aesthetics, and there's things you could do about aesthetics. I, I think more and more people are more concerned about having that connection. And not as much as they were as far as these big cell sites. Not, don't get me wrong, there's people that are, you know, still concerned about the big cell sites, but we might be able to do something smaller at a smaller level. We just don't know. We have to study it. Yeah, so, and, 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 and I think just, just as is going on in Northern Westchester. Yeah. Government's role is to advocate. Yes, I mean, yes, the governments, the local governments want to do to get ahead of the federal governments because they want to have control over it. Cause what might happen is you might have Homeland Security or something saying, you know what? We're going to put a tower here and we don't need your permission. Well, we'll see what happens with the current administration, but certainly the history or the previous administration is that the FCC had, had eliminated a great deal of local control over any of this. Right. But, you know, I can tell you, and again, I, I don't say this to say it's by any means clear. And, and just as you rightly point out, uh, we need to understand what this looks like going forward. And if it's a matter of pushing Verizon, A T and T, T-Mobile, whoever it is, to start to, to, to squeaky wheel gets the grease. Yeah, I don't. But by the same token, uh, you know, we've had a few moments when in, in, uh, the not terribly recent past, when somebody's come forward and proposed to put a whole bunch of antennas on the outside of their building and that has been a matter of concern to neighbors, not only how it would look, but, you know, concerns about radiation and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, all those issues come into play, but thank you for pointing out. I mean, we're, we're clearly at an inflection point, uh, where the demand and the level of use is different from what it was even. And that's why I think it's important to have an unbiased study. Someone who is unbiased and not necessarily a cell tower company coming in here to doing it for profit or, you know, the Verizons of the world. We need somebody that has an unbiased opinion that could tell us what's right for the town and get feedback from the town on what they think is the correct way to go about it. And then once we have that, we gotta advocate for the private investment by the carriers. Cause it would not be a government investment. Yes, and then it goes to the cell towers. There's, there's company that, you know, can create infrastructure. Not necessarily the Verizons or the T-Mobles of the world, but there are companies that can create infrastructure within towns to help us with that. But again, that's kind of the third step. Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, Kirk.
All right, fields of facilities, this is your moment.
This is our moment? All right, um, should I, do you wanna, should I turn it over to Mike and Angela?
Want to talk about the middle school first or, cause I see the bleachers and press box.
Okay. I, I would talk about, we, 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 we had started the budget conversation and we had talked about how last year, because we didn't know it was happening, um, we had put more in our budget just in case there were cuts. And there weren't cuts. So we also got some money from the federal government, so I'll turn it over to Michael and Angela, who are on our facilities committee, to talk about some of the thoughts and.
Right.
That they've had.
So, so as Shane pointed out, uh, we had actually, as part of our last capital project earmarked about six hundred thousand dollars for middle school HVAC. And it was being done in an approach that was not holistic, as was done in BRS and the high school. And it was just simply because there wasn't enough funds to do a holistic project. It was more of, uh, single units, air conditioners, a mix of solutions. I think one of the things that COVID has taught us is how important having proper ventilation, heating, cooling and, and exchange of air rates is. So, um, with the six hundred thousand dollars that we have, plus one point three, six, seven million that we got from, uh, from the government, we now have enough to do a partial, um, a partial job of the, uh, the middle school in a fashion that would bring it in line with what was done at BRS and at the high school. What we're looking into now is doing it as a single project, spending a little bit more money, which would likely mean a, a small bond, um, in order to do the project once. And, um, and do it as a single unit, which I, I believe, I think will actually end up saving us money as opposed to doing half the project, coming back three, four, five years later and trying to do the other half. So, um, we're, we're very excited about it. We're looking at the numbers right now. John is. So um we're we're very excited about it. We're looking at the numbers right now. John is looking at the numbers. I'm probably off by a decimal somewhere. But it's exciting that we have this money and this money, uh, as as you said, a lot of these funds are earmarked for certain purposes and this. This is one of the purposes we can use it for. And if we don't use it, we we lose it. So. Uh, it's a, it's a gift that uh that we should take them up on.
So so that's what's going on at the middle school. Um, we 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 did.
The other thing I would add is um is to tie it in with what Shane was talking about. You know, we we were conservative last year. We ended up having. A a surplus and so we are allowed to have uh four percent of our budget. We are allowed to have in in an un- unassigned reserve fund. We're actually closer to six percent at this point because of. What happened last year, the conservative approach we took and not having some of the expenses that we expected, not getting our state aid cut. So we're planning to use um that additional uh two percent or so of of our reserves. To help offset the cost of this as well.
A portion of it.
A portion of it.
As well as I think John brought up, not not from the monetary perspective, but setting aside a a capital reserve on an ongoing basis. Um, not funding it, but simply creating the fund where excess money would go into in the event in the future there was excess money. Um, because as a.
And and do do the rules allow you to keep money over and above the four percent in a capital?
Well, this this would be earmarked.
That would be one of the.
Of your previous year's budget, unassigned, no more than that. Everything else has to be assigned.
Right, so this capital budget.
You have no such limit, but you have other issues.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
This capital budget would be um put in place for different upcoming projects like. You know, believe it or not, our our turf fields are six years old already. They tend to have a lifespan of between ten and fifteen years, so um so. That will be another big ticket item that we will have to come up with the money. One million, two million, who knows how much it'll be at that point. Um, so the the purpose of this capital fund would be. Capital reserve fund would be to earmark some money for large projects of that sort. So independent of this middle school HVAC program or project that we're talking about.
And we're we're, we happen to be in a pretty good position with our facilities. I mean, they always need work and care. There's a cost of ownership for a lot of these things, but. In learning more about this as being part of the facilities committee, the the team has done an exceptional job in forecasting our needs and not. Being reactive, but being proactive and looking at things and saying. This is six, seven years out, we're going to have to look at replacing this and it could be a couple of million bucks, so we should start thinking about how we're going to get that couple of million bucks instead of. Doing it all at once. One of the great things about the reserve account is once we approve the actual account. If there's excess, money will be put in there, but the public will get to approve the individual projects. So it's not a blank check where that excess goes in and we decide to do X. We would put it forward to the community and say, we'd like to do this at the school because we think it adds value to the facilities.
Just approval to create the fund and then there's another, we would have to have another bond to actually utilize any funds in that reserve fund. And they would have to earmark for s- s- specific projects.
Yeah, going back to what um Michael was saying, I I think it's important to note that if you look over like the last. Ten, twelve years, um, we've had opportunities where we're coming off one bond. Um, to go on to another one, to do some of these maintenance items that have been that have been highlighted. And so we've really been working hard to consistently um keep our facilities in in good shape and we've been able to add. You know, pipelines when it came for infra- infrastructure, for internet access, you know, knowing that we're going to continue to infuse technology. Into the into the curriculum and then the need for that, uh, being able to do all those things really while keeping taxes stable. The 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 tax cap formula is a very interesting formula and it actually penalizes you. When you, when you leave a bond, if you don't take out another one. Um, so we've been able to uh essentially keep our infrastructure improving while. Keeping the cost on that kind of a net zero. So it's kind of like if you lease a car, right, you know, you lease a car for three or four years and you have a certain cost. You go get a new car, but you're staying paying that same lease payment. So costs haven't increased. Um, however, we've been continued to upgrade. And so this is a new.
Part of the reason this this capital fund's a good idea, though, also is because we won't be coming off of bonds.
Right.
Anytime soon. And so this is a a way for us to make sure that we. Put money aside if we have it to address things that we may not be able to address otherwise.
Right, I mean, like the turf field, you know, every ten or fifteen years, you got this big number.
Sure, we the community.
Funded annually, you know, the money is there when you need it.
The community made a decision to go turf and therefore, once you have, you have to keep it that way and it's going to need to be replaced.
Well, I don't know.
So I I I love, I absolutely love, love, love the topic of HVAC.
Eric, Eric is becoming.
Eric and I actually.
He's gonna become a union plumber.
About this topic. So I want you to think about it this way, just for a moment, and even if you look in this room. You're going to see vents and air vents and different devices. So a HVAC system does three things. Okay, it can heat the air, it can cool the air, and it can exchange the air. And then when you put that and you put a management system over it, a massive communication system. That will control the levers and that and the levers here and the the wheels and the senses the temperature outside and senses the humidity. So you can maximize the air exchange in a classroom based upon capacity. You have one heck of a HVAC system. So the high school has that. It doesn't cool it, but it exchanges manages. The Bedford Road School has it all, but the middle school has something that if you have an older house, you have. A radiator or a Univent that heats. We have ceiling fans that are controlled manually, right? Okay? And then we have individual air conditioners in some spots. So we would love to put, and we've learned this from COVID, that fresh air is such a good idea and the ability to exchange it and censor it. And to test it, i- it's energy efficient, it's good for health, so we would like to put into the middle school. The same type of HVAC system with all those wonderful sensors that's there. Now, I'm saying that right now, we have HEPA filters, we have MIR filters, we manually turn off those fans, we are looking at that. We hired an engineering firm to come in and help us with this. So it's good, but. The Univents in the nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty building need to be replaced. We've gotten the, you know, we got our bank for a buck. They still heat, but their time, they have reached the end of their life. So for us, we had put in the budget some money to do thirteen of them and thirteen more. But when we got this gift of one point three six seven million dollars from the state. We sat there and then we looked at, because we had a positive variance in our building fund because we were good. You know, we were very fiscal, we negotiated, we bid, so we had additional funding from that. We added that to the money left over from when we looked at those old Univents and decide. Oh, my gosh, this thing looks like it may cost six million dollars to do the whole thing, but we could fund four million of it. So that's where we are in that conversation.
Where's the air handler gonna go?
The air handling units could go either on the roofs. I get that if you go to Bedford Road School, I'll take you around, you can see them and even at the high school, if you're coming up. The two stairwells on either side, if you look at on the flat roofs, you'll see them there too. So we call those RTUs rooftop units. So the middle school, believe it or not, is is a very flat roof, unlike the other two buildings, so there is definitely space to use. AHUs that are RTUs there.
And then and then building aid also, the state would give us, what is the? Is it fifty-three percent or? Fifty-three.
Big money.
Right, so we spend the money, we spend the money to do the project and then we get fifty percent back.
Fifty-three percent back, but we wouldn't be getting.
Not not on the one point four million that we're getting from the feds, because that's a grant to begin with, but.
We can't double dip.
Was HVAC knowledge part of the interview process to select Tina?
So i- in addition to that, we're also looking at the the high school backfield. Uh, we've had, we've had some uh problems with voids uh underneath, close to uh where the. There was some work done um in past years to sort of beef up that area when the, when the country club. Was built, when all that. There needed to be a wall there and so there there's some, we we uh, there's been some issues with some voids and. And and things caving in and most recently, we had a uh, a ground penetrating radar. Uh, company come, so we're assessing that right now to see what would be the best approach to. Fixing up that field and and what we want to do with that, so we have to consider how much that would cost. And then we're also looking at uh the potential for lighting on the turf, the main turf field, because. As we all know, we don't have enough fields here, so if we could utilize those fields in the evening or when it's starting to get dark, we could still have. School games and then have dad's club games, ASO soccer games afterwards. You know, at any additional time we can get, utilizing those fields would be a benefit. So. We're looking at multiple different things right now to see what we could, might potentially put into a bond.
I think what we'll start with, you, there's a lot to unpack there. There's a lot to unpack there, so maybe what we'll start with is Mary.
I'm trying to summarize, because it's getting late.
No, I understand. Um, we have a late breaking report. I think we got a little bit of information today.
Oh, okay.
Um, on the, on the sonar tests and.
Okay, so um, you know, thirty-one years ago, we extended the size of that that height, we call it high school back and we've gotten a lot of use out of it. Um, but that, uh, an extensive level of, and this ties in. Drainage was put there in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, a retaining pond. Uh, switched back down to the country club so that that hole there was no longer a lake when it rained. And if you look at the high school, we added two wings to it in two thousand and eight, nine. Massive amount of shedding of water off that roof and water will always seek its lowest point. And it flow, it goes through all the piping in that field there to the retention pond and then out to other areas. We, we're very happy to report that our sonar testing looks like there the one, there is a void in one area. That is probably where one of those new drains is, so um. Good report on the field that it looks like we can address that and fix that the way, if it's just a drain or if there's. Loose soil around that or anything, but it looks like we're in a much better shape than we thought by this uh radar sonar company.
So the void is not not too deep?
About six feet, they went down back six feet. Three feet, right. So, good news in that level. Because that has created, you know, as you all know, it's used as a practice field, it's used as a upfield for our JV soccer program. A lot of use and that puts a lot of pressure on soldiers and sailors and we move things around, so. Getting that field back in use for the spring will help everybody out.
It's our softball field, it's the outfield for our softball. Gets a lot of use.
Yeah, and I think Dan had mentioned at our last, last meeting or the one before, the percentage of students that actually are involved in extracurricular sports. And and it's a huge number. So we're always going to be constrained on the field, so we have to be smart and responsible in looking at these things and saying. You know, what do we, what do we do with high school back? Do we repair it? Do we look to do something else with it, a longer term solution, but that also means that if it were some other type of solution that twelve years, fifteen years down the road. That's going to be another cost center for us. And as Angela said, you know, do we look into lighting uh one or more of the fields so that we can extend their their usage period? It's it's all very thoughtful planning and thankfully, you know, we're we're, we're undergoing that process and looking at these things to make sure that the kids. Uh, have enough areas to play.
All all exactly right. I mean, as you well know, uh, lighting fields is contentious with some. So you'll navigate that as you will.
Yeah, we had a great meeting with um, with the company that does this sort of thing and and it it's interesting. There there's, there's, what do they call it, non-diffusing lights, there's special lights that. You know, there's really, you don't see any light if you're standing behind it. It's, it's all terrain forwards. I mean, there's, there's a lot of new options available to uh, you know, to mitigate the infringement on neighbors. So that's, so that's what we're looking into.
So I mean, we, we obviously have this issue down at Parkway and don't have field lights all the way around, but um. Those were put up, what, twenty years ago-ish, something like that and uh. Uh, they're potentially ripe to be relamped with LED fixtures and that was pushing a million bucks, so you know.
But you've also done the backfields.
Yeah, so now that was a much smaller venture, but I I think a significant improvement. I mean, I, I was down at the football game the other night and.
Oh, it's just nice having that back area.
We don't have everything we wish we had, but when you compared what we have now.
It's just a lot safer.
Ten years ago, we've got lights in the back with with uh. Senator, then Senator Murphy's assistance and and uh, all of us new bleachers, you guys bought the new press box. We, we built the new bathrooms and paving and new bridge and so.
It's a much improved facility and we've also been able to take care of the field really, really well.
New goalposts.
And and now painfully.
Repainted the field.
You're gonna go to Arlington and then we're gonna have field envy. Which is why they hold the games.
It's a very different, it's a much bigger facility.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Mr. Mayor, there's someone at the mic.
Someone is at the microphone, welcome, sir.
Hello, John Pomosi, fifty-two High Ridge Corps. So we're talking about facilities, uh, and I heard the word bathrooms mentioned. So we have four facilities, four fields that our recreation programs use, right? Rozelle, Parkway, Soldiers and High School. Uh, out of those four, one of them, the most used, does not have any bathroom facilities for the recreation programs.
The high school property.
The high school property does not have a bathroom. Um, there was a porta potty, it was removed in June. Um, we've raised the issue both to the village and the school and I don't think there's been any progress on it and at this point. You know, just yesterday I was there rushing a game and someone comes up to me and says, is there a bathroom here? I said, no. There's the library or there's McDonald's and people then go down to the Edible Garden. Or the not so edible garden anymore, uh, and they use the facilities there, uh, which is the bushes. So I'm asking if we can get uh some kind of facilities put in. Long term, maybe we're looking at it, but at least something short term uh to be put in for the recreation programs there.
So that would be potentially, you know, immediate, short term, portalets.
Yeah.
W- where, Rozelle?
No, at the high school.
No, he's talking about the high school.
I know, but we don't have it Rozelle the moon either. We once did.
We did.
We did in the past.
Okay.
We had some vandalism trouble, but that isn't necessarily a reason not to do it again. I mean, is that a source of concern also or no, I'm just trying to be?
No, just anything would be great.
So that would be you guys, right?
Okay, so so to be clear, um, we did a a number of years ago, um, in the high school. In the lower level by the gym, make it possible so that when we had a cust- a custodial staff on site. For school sports, um, people could go into the school and use the facilities.
Right.
My understanding now is that where the porta potties were before are a difficult place to. Get to um for, you know, getting the trucks in and out to both empty them and replace them when needed to be. And my understanding is that we are looking at the situation to see potentially. Where uh porta potties could go in a safe manner, but I'll ask Mary if you have anything further to add.
Tina's gonna run the other way screaming HVAC.
Well stated, I mean, uh, um, the the idea is this where would be the ideal solution or place to put it on campus. So we'll ask Steve um and take a look at it. He'll he'll walk with John.
And then, well, no, so. So then the question is who's also gonna, you know, order them and maintain them and not let the, the joint board figure that out. Um, you know, moving forward, but as of yesterday, there's no bathrooms and hopefully we have, you know, a few weeks left. Hopefully, you know, I know there's one in Nantahagan Park and hopefully it's just a a phone call that someone can make and say, can, can you drop one off? So I don't know, you know, who's who's responsible, but I think there do need, there does need to be facilities uh put in there.
John, just correct me if I'm wrong, just to make sure I know or don't know. In the past, um, ASO was paying for them, correct, or am I wrong?
Yep, we did. But at the end of the day, it's not our, you know, we 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 did it, it was there, but it became very, very difficult. To, you know, as as you mentioned, the location and the calls and everything, and we we dropped out of that business.
Where were they?
They were, if you are, um, if you're looking at the the lower turf, uh, the the the, the practice field, turf field. There's a pathway that goes down the hill so you can get in under the gym. And they were, they were there on the entrance to the lower gym. And they were, they were there on the entrance to the lower gym. And there were three or four of them there, but it was problematic to get a truck down there.
There was one.
There was one? I remember there being more than one at different times.
And then we worked with the school, we had it moved to the back. We put it there and then the school called the next day and said, no, you can't put it there. We have shipping containers, a field, and we said, all right, forget it. We can't be going down there every day or two, so we pulled out of it.
It was actually in the same spot for multiple years and we never had any problems with it until we pulled it out. During COVID, we pulled it out and when we went to put it back in the same spot, all of a sudden there were.
The company, right, had had issues because they have to go over cars or were damaging them. I don't know, something happened at another facility where they became liable. And so they they said that spot does not work.
So, John, just to be clear, so I understand, so you're asking whom to pay for them them going forward?
I don't care. I'm asking for bathrooms to be put in there, porta potties, between the two, you know, between the two boards to get together and figure it out.
I would also ask if you could discourage people from using the edible garden.
The best way to discourage them is to put in porta potties. I never send them there. We don't send them there. I said, I said, library, McDonald's, and then you see people going down there. It's the most private place at the field. You see kids down there all the time, you know, because they have to go and they're there for a little bit. So number two is, you know, we have netting at the high school and the, you know, behind the goals. And we're talking about pedestrian safety and people walking the track. At Soldiers and Sailors, I think it's, and I I raise this as well, a very dangerous situation, where we have a goal or first base and we have kids shooting a ball, throwing a ball, and it goes into Manville Road, right? Cars are coming by, cars can get hit, people can get hit there. Kids then, you know, instinctively try to run into the road. And what I think we need there is netting. And I did send an email asking if we, if netting can be put in. Once again, I don't know whose responsibility it is.
This is Soldiers and Sailors?
Soldiers and Sailors.
So that would be us. The first thing would be the school district, this would be us.
Okay.
Yeah. No?
Well, I mean, I mean.
Well, we can't.
ASO is.
We've been at this a long time. Because it's a recreation program, right? The porta potties are for a recreation program, not for an interscholastic athletic program, which is defined by the state from grade seven through twelve. So we open up the facilities when we use it outside. We were, we, we actually tried in the two thousand seven bond for the high school to put a field house there with bathrooms in it. But the state wouldn't give us aid on it and it became exorbitant in price for us to do. And that project was very tight. So at the end of the day, we found a, you know, you could either hire a custodian all day like we do for other recreation programs, but you guys are on that field from like eight AM to eight PM.
The dad's club, everyone's there.
All day for recreation. So when we open up the gyms, let's say, the different community groups will pay for a custodian to have access to the building, access to the gym, access to water, access to bathrooms. It's the same idea here. So we would either have access to our bathrooms and I ours, I meant the taxpayer, the school district and the custodian that's there, which we do pay for, obviously, when our kids are using it as part of the interscholastic athletic program. However, when it's a recreation program or ASO is using it or different groups that do come out and do use it, those are community groups, they're not school based groups, so it's.
Is it only Pleasantville Village?
No, no, it goes, it's it's school district based.
And you could have, and you could have different groups too, like John, John, as well, where that you have different travel teams who do use facilities that come from different communities and towns as well.
Look, we're all in this together. You know, the the bathrooms we build at Parkway and the bathrooms we build at Soldiers and Sailors also benefit the school groups that that practice there. So we'll figure it out. One interesting question, and perhaps you already know the answer, we don't need to get into it now, is is there a realistic place to put, say, a bathroom building of the sort we built, got it Parkway, which was a partly prefab thing, but do you have water and sewer in a reasonable place to put such a thing? You said there was a plan that ultimately got asked for budget reasons. Maybe it's worth dusting that off. I I can't obviously commit any of us to spending money on it, but the porta let story is is a necessary interval of darkness before light.
We have a short term need there on that issue, you know? I can tell you that benchmarking at the Valhalla High School, they have porta potties there. They're paid for by, my understanding is the town of Mount Pleasant, rec department pays for those. And they they do that because they're used by recreation groups. But that's whatever you guys decide is is fine with me.
Whatever, I I don't think that part of it isn't so much a budget issue, we just have to figure out, you know, where they would go and.
Yeah, agreed. So that's the second issue is around the netting, if we can, you know, get netting there because balls do go there. I mean, Pace closed, you know, their softball field when one ball went onto the tachonic. And we have balls all the time going on to Manville for, you know, for school soccer games or or rec games or whatever. So it's a joint issue and I think, you know, we're, we've so far avoided.
Is it a net or should the chain link be extended, the backstop?
I mean, I think the netting we have at the high school, if you kind of take that, that's behind the goals and those are there to protect people as well, you know, who are going on the tracks and don't get a ball to the head. I think if you put something like that at Soldiers, I think you'd be fine. I think it's a relatively inexpensive solution. You can temporarily put it up during the seasons, take it down for the summer or keep it up, whatever you want. But I think, I think some kind of safety measure, so balls are not flying onto Manville.
Shouldn't some sort of tall posts that this thing hangs between? So we'll take a look.
Yeah. And and I guess the the third issue that I know has been kicking around that I don't seem to have resolution on is use of fields on Sundays before eleven AM. You know, and reading through the the village rules, it talks about parks in the village and fields are not able to be used prior to eleven AM on Sundays, Sundays by organized sports. I read that as it talking about fields within parks are not able to be used before eleven AM. So my understanding is, I guess, is that the high school would be exempt from that regulation because it is not a park within the village. So I don't think that regulation would apply. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Look, it's it's not our right to tell the school what to do, but the school has always said at the times that those facilities are made available as rec purses, they would follow the village rules. I know that there's some violation of that, but.
And we do, and you know, and as you know, when you come to use facilities, you you fill out insurance forms, insurance certificates, the whole enchilada gets, it's gets scheduled into a a scheduling system, so every group and everyone can see. But we follow the village guidelines here and we do not allow through our approval anyone before that time. So anyone who's down there, it's on their own time, their own pickup game, their own, they're approaching it.
I mean, as you know, John, you know, you and I have been through this a lot over the years. Depends which side of the issue you're on. We have all of these fields and athletic facilities in residential neighborhoods and we can reengage the question of whether eleven is the right time. It hasn't been engaged in a public way for a long time. And when it was last engaged, we went from noon to eleven. But at the time, we filled the room with folks who lived in those neighborhoods who said, you know, our lives are are upended by the level of activity on these fields.
So it's a noise issue is what you're saying.
Pardon?
It's a noise issue.
It was a noise, activity, screaming, yelling, I mean, lights come into it. Obviously, that would be a discussion you guys would have if you thought about lights. But by the same token, you know, the world changes and people may have different views than they had then and.
I mean, from from a noise ordinance perspective, right? You can mow your lawn, you can use your leaf blower at nine AM on Sunday, but you can't have kids play a soccer game, you can't have kids play lacrosse.
But I mean, look, it it it's not a a reasonable comparison, I don't think. You need to cut your grass, grass, right?
I mean, I don't know, I think it's a reasonable comparison to say you can cut your lawn next to your neighbor's, you know, window or you can, you can blow a leaf, but you can't have kids out there, you know, running around and playing in an organized manner. I don't.
So is your proposal?
Again, I'm not taking any side of the issue and I'm happy, I think it's reasonable at this point to reengage the community and neighbors of all these facilities in here, what they have to say because it may be that the world, you know, people's views about this are now different. But I can tell you that, you know, as you know, some of these activities involve seventy five or a hundred cars and and a whole lot of activity and a whole lot of noise. So there there isn't any way ever to solve that, but let's reengage the discussion, happy to do it.
Would would your proposal, John, be to start at nine?
To align it with the noise ordinances?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, if if you can, you know, if you can use your leaf blower.
Maybe we can make the noise ordinance a little later and then.
I mean, if you want to align them both to ten, great. You know, I think that's fine.
Will Will Gore somebody's ox here, it's just a question of who's, right?
I think the one important thing to point out is the fields are being used earlier by organized groups. And they're doing it without insurance and without permits.
And they need to stop.
But there's no enforcement of that. I mean, there was, I mean, we we closed the fields, you know, on Parkway two weeks ago with the heavy rain. And we said, we don't want to tear up the field, we don't think it's safe. And there was a whole group out there using the fields uninsured, you know.
Here's what been going on with that. When we can find out who it was, we go back and chase them. Are, do we have a mechanism to chase them in real time? Don't don't really have that mechanism. I mean, we could talk about what that might look like, but, you know, as you well know, we've had a few circumstances where, whatever, we have some organized group that shows up with referees and equipment and the whole nine yards, like, no, guys. That 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 is either in violation at the time or in the way of somebody else.
I guess what we're asking for, if if that portion is not being enforced, then why are we enforcing it against groups that are coming through the front door and knocking politely and giving the insurance certificate? So, you know, there's a debate that we can, you know, take on at a time.
What do, what do you want? When you, when you say enforcement, what, do you want Eric to take care of that?
I think that would be fine.
You mean, pay somebody to?
No, if someone sees someone out there, you say, listen, I don't think that group has, and have someone, you know, because you know, you know they don't have a permit.
Right, on a Sunday, we don't have anybody to do that who's on on duty. It would cost money. So, look, it it it's a problem that has ebbed and flowed, as you know. And and Mike Newman, our rec sum retainer, chases after folks who and says, hey, you know, guys, you know, cut it out. And for the most part, people are reasonable about recognizing that. Obviously, there's a tremendous interest in Westchester in a field constraining world to find a field, right? You know, we've got, went through a period of time when when people were hammering metal stakes into asphalt parking lots to put up volleyball nets for pretty, pretty impressive volleyball games. But again, you know, they're doing this in places that they just can't do it. So we'll work on it.
Those are my three, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on any of that?
Anybody else want to chime in on fields and facilities?
Not to belabor the point, but tennis courts? Mary, John, do either of you want to mention what we did there? Because it was on the, just because it was on.
No, no, good point.
The tennis courts that were built there in the seventies were built, if you have this visual, the bottom of a bowl and a lot of water came in from the sides and it disrupted the courts themselves. So what we did here, we patched them a few times, but this time we did a significant project where we actually raised the bed of the tennis courts over two feet. So what has happened though is that the sides around in some of the property, they do slope down and then there's a slope down from the courts down. We took the facilities committee out to take a look at it. So we're going to put another fence around the courts in the back. So when you're running back, you pull, you know, pull down to a little ditch and then back up another one. So there you go. We do have, only because they're a little taller now, some of the tennis balls are now going into our neighbors' homes. So we will take a look at a little bit taller fence because we're up two feet. But.
No players over, say, five, six?
That person, when you're out there watching kids running back to get a shot, they go, oh, okay. So we are putting a fence around that. We do have a Bluetooth Bob base system, you know, for people that want to try to have access for a period of time when we're not using it. We'll, we're watching that and see how it works. But people have to register, they have to say who they are, et cetera.
Yeah, I wanted you to talk a little bit about that because it it as part of the project, it would have cost, I don't know, tens of thousands of dollars to run the electrical out there to have a, to have a.
Six figures to run the power out to do ridiculous. So we're trying this system, you know, if we get a huge capacity, then it's a problem. But right now it is working for people. You have to register through the athletic website to do that. But again, the primary use is for the our PE program. It's part of our physical education curriculum and then for our school district extra and co-curricular activities. And then if it does work out that people can schedule, of course, mindful of their their neighbors, right? Again, where that's, they sign up through that Bluetooth application, which is found on the athletic website. We might end up, if there's a huge need, if it continues to grow, to have to revisit, how do you gain that level of access and running power out to that fence? Either that or you have someone who monitors it and there's a fee involved. I mean, it gets a fairly complicated question at some point, right? The times we had left it unlocked, I I have to tell you, even the first year after we refurbished it, within twenty four hours, we had people walking their dogs, we had skateboarders on it. It is a nice little cozy dark space for adolescents to go and hang out sometimes too, which so we really prefer for the safety of our kids, for the privacy of the neighbors who are around that, to keep it locked. That's the reason why we do it. And it's a public, it's a public school piece of property asset. And we spent a lot of money fixing it and we want to maintain it that way. And no, I have had people ask me, Mary, why can't I run my dog in there? Why can't, you know, I don't understand why we can't have skateboards in there and the surface of the tennis court just doesn't support that type.
We've also had people rollerblading, playing hockey.
Yes, yes, all of the above, all of the above.
All right. If the number of attendees in Zoom is an indication, we're outlasting the patience of our audience.
Yeah, we're only about fifty minutes behind for your public hearing.
So, you know, we had an item about ongoing safety, school safety programs. We have a pedestrian safety committee. As you've seen, we've been painting some crosswalks green, that's been very well received. They continue to meet and have lots of ideas. Nicole's been talking to those folks. And, you know, we have ongoing requests for additional crossing guards, more crosswalks, overpass on the sawmill, all that kind of stuff. You know, we're spending six figures on on crossing guards as it is. And that's entirely funded by the village taxpayer. And as you might imagine, we also have some struggles in getting enough people to do it.
Same here.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably get shot for what I'm about to say. But I feel obligated because I get a lot of feedback from a lot of people and I see the chief is in the audience. But and and I say this globally to everybody.
Yeah.
So.
There's our chance to shoot him.
You only get one, so you better take your shot. So, you know, there are certain areas in town that are a lot more difficult than others. And obviously pedestrians are a priority because you want, and safety is a priority. However, there are certain arteries that are are difficult when it comes to traffic. And one of them is the intersection of Romer and Bedford. And sometimes there, as much as you want to try and cross kids, cars get held up for a long period of time if there's any child in sight within fifty yards.
You think yards is too aggressive?
I was trying to stay, I was trying away from speaking about specific individuals. I have, I have, a lot of people have asked me.
A police officer is coming to the podium.
A lot of people have just asked me.
It's true, because it it creates from from that corner, it then backs all the way up, down. It it just covers all the arteries of that for about twenty minutes.
I I worry about road rage and someone, you know, jumping at just because they're waiting. Sorry, chief.
No, not at all.
Welcome, Chief Kretzner.
Believe me, this was not an anticipated conversation on my part at all. I didn't expect we'd be talking about school guards when I was here with the school board and the village board. No, this is. Yes, no, so we 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 obviously have heard these concerns also. It's not just that intersection, it is Manville Road and Academy Street, obviously, is also another concern. You know, what we've always said to people is that and we say this nicely, but basically the job is is much more difficult than it appears to be.
I'm sure.
For Doris especially, she has people making left turns on the Romer Avenue. She has people coming off of the side streets. You know, Academy Street and Bedford gets backed up because the traffic moves, spreads out in both directions. We really do, I mean, from beyond a purely traffic standpoint, we have three school buildings that are letting out within, not not overlapping, but within close proximity to each other, within two blocks of each other. So it it is an extremely difficult situation to manage. We have, we are encouraging walking and yet we still have a number of people who drive. And so you have pretty much, you know, we we've literally seen families drop one kid off and then be back in the same area 15 minutes later, dropping a second student off. So there are a lot of things that go into the fact of why so many cars and why so many pedestrians are in the same exact spot at the same exact time. I I have seen those times where I thought to myself, you know what? As I'm sitting in a car thinking, I I probably could have gotten a few cars through through the intersection, but the fact is that when you're standing in the intersection, it's it's very difficult. I I shouldn't say it's very difficult. I will say that the complexity of trying to manage child-student behavior, walking to school and at the same time trying to please drivers who, in all fairness, in very limited circumstances, probably don't have to be there as often as they are. And I say that for the people who are commuting, who have, I mean, listen, I have to drive all around this town during arrival and dismissal. I avoid Bedford Road. For the life of me, I don't know why more people don't. We have plenty of people who go straight through Bedford Road or up Manville Road to to get to Chapel Court, to get across the county. I understand it's not convenient. I understand if if you take different routes, you now run into other traffic areas in places. But, you know, between 7:45 and 8:30, that's really not the the best place to be if you if you don't have to be there. You know, we would love to see the volume of traffic decreased. You know, some of the pedestrian committee has talked about, you know, sort of the the walking school bus where we have groups, the group, the kids group themselves together. Sure, it's it's, you know, you see one kid walking down the street and 25 feet behind him is a second kid and they're coming up to a crossing guard and you know that there's going to be an extended period of time where the road gets shut down. But when we train those crossing guards, we train them that your first priority, the only reason you are there is to get those kids safely across the street.
Yeah, can I just say a word in favor of Doris? I I'm one of the people who, because of where we live, we're there a couple, four times a day, you know, two different schools, three kids. I've sat in plenty of that traffic. I've also been one of the parents walking kids through that intersection and I would not want her any other way. She's the safest person in town. She does a remarkable job and I'd rather her piss off 50 pedestrian, you know, 50 people in cars every single day to save the one kid.
And and believe me, if I thought for one second the door was that Doris was out there trying to piss people off, it would be a different conversation. I I just think, and and again, I'll say this, I have been sitting in traffic mistakenly got on Bedford Road and said, and and watched and said, oh, my gosh, why is she not letting cars go through? But the fact is, kids coming from all different directions, it's very difficult to get traffic to stop, you know, especially at a at a four-way offset intersection. It's extremely difficult. Manville Road and Academy Street, you have people who are trying to make the right turn to go up Academy in the mornings. You have people who are trying to get through thinking, well, I'm only going to skip over the double yellow line a little bit. We have the concerns about road rage. We understand, we recognize that when people get frustrated, they make bad decisions. But in the grand scheme of things, when we're training our people, the the idea is safety, getting cars to to go and stop and go and stop. Yes, one or two more cars might be able to get through an intersection. But you now increase the number of times you have to stop traffic when someone, the crossing guard or someone else is potentially going to be in the roadway while cars are moving. So it it is, in many ways, I don't want to say it's unavoidable, but but to me, the the most and to your, there, I don't, I don't mean to say that people who have to come through that intersection multiple times should need to find a different way to do it. What I'm saying is, unfortunately, the priority of getting vehicles through that intersection or through those that area quickly comes secondarily to making sure that the kids are are crossing safely.
Yeah.
One thing that would alleviate some of that traffic there for Doris, if people could be suggested, and I know we can't really tell people what to do, when they come out of the middle school, instead of making the right on Romer to make the left onto Bedford, if they made a left on Romer, went through past the high school and then went to Sunnyside or Martling, because that would deflect the traffic flow, you know what I mean?
I think some people do.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, that's what I do.
Yeah, I mean, I, my, my kids have absolutely no excuse not to walk to school, but occasionally I get strong-armed into it. And, you know, I I feel like, I I feel like Doris gets a little bit of a bad rap that way because I actually find it to be relatively efficient, given everything.
It's gotten better.
And I also wanted to thank you, I've forgotten right now the name of the crossing guard who does Manville Road.
Ron.
No, not Ron, sorry, fur- further down.
Oh, Bygrado?
By Bygrado.
Linda Bygrado?
That's Linda Snyder.
Yeah, that's right. She's great and she has a really tough job because it's so wide there that the cars often really do not slow down at all. And so you guys have been helpful recently in in having a little bit of presence, which I think is sometimes required to remind people that, you know, they need to be mindful and and slow down.
We did, we did have, you know, it's it's back to school, the first month, six weeks, even two months sometimes, you know, depending, it really is a product too of the weather, how how long sort of it takes for people to start sort of getting into the mindset of, okay, this is what we have to do every day and this is, and I need to be a little bit more responsible. So we did get some concerns from the community. We thank the community for reaching out to us and letting us know where they're where they're seeing problems. We were out and trying to do it, you know, Linda's job is very difficult because people finally get past Academy Street and it's smooth sailing, right? I can, I can, I can make up some time. So it's a wide road, you're kind of coming around that corner. It's it's a, it's a difficult position. It's a little bit narrow as you're going up towards the old village, you know, going eastbound there on Manville Road. So yet that's, those are, you know, we have a number of very challenging traffic locations and that's why we put crossing guards there is because, you know, the only thing worse than having a crossing guard there is not having a crossing guard there and having kids trying to cross the street on their own.
And that we think about the the success of our local businesses, the restaurants, the increasing number of people at the farmer's market, all of these pressures are getting stronger, you know, that the that interactions with the pedestrians, bicyclists and cars are getting worse. I just saw somebody hit by a car on Manville here, what, three or four days ago? And, you know, that that's going to be one of our big challenges going forward. We're becoming, the good news, we're becoming more and more of a pedestrian town. The bad news is that all of these, you know, when when they turn horse, horse paths into streets, all of us began to think that the car is the most important thing that happens in a village and it's not. And we really have to get people to reorient their mindset.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously we have so much development and 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 work going on, you know, Washington Avenue, the last couple of of weeks has had that project that's going on there where they're, you know, digging into the street and shutting down one lane of traffic. There just seems to be, there doesn't seem to be a village or a location or a street or a location inside the village that isn't in some way impacted by improvements, upgrades, development, and, you know, that obviously brings trucks, it brings impatience, it brings, you know, time for trucks to back into driveways and things like that. It's 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 a very.
Well, and the sawmill project, you know, it's going to go on another year or more.
Yes, yes. So we we are definitely sensitive to the concerns of of traffic and the quality of life issues that that increased traffic brings. So hopefully.
So chief, thank you very much because I think a lot of the people who who are having the issues when it comes to driving, you know, are unaware of something that's training that goes on. So thank you for taking us through that. And I just want to apologize also to all the crossing guards. I didn't try and make this about anyone specific individual. I was trying to stay away from particular names and
inevitable. I mean, you're talking about a.
I understand.
Pleasantville icon.
I was just trying to talk in general and you guys, all right.
I guarantee you the next time I see Doris, she's going to say, did they talk about me at the meeting? And I'll say, yes, Doris, we talked about you.
And it was, and it was great a few years ago when, when, you know, the Chamber of Commerce gave her award.
Yep.
Amid many happy, amusing moments with 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 Doris, on that occasion, she said in her matter-of-fact manner, my motto is no blood on my intersection.
I have heard her say that.
But but she's, I mean, she's a fixture, she's a Pleasantville fixture. I remember going to the Little Theater and having her come to the Little Theater place.
She will be hard to replace when she decides to hang up her stop sign.
She's a, she is a 12-month employee of the village. She she is constantly, there is never a time where she is not participating and contributing to this village. She is, she is, she's deservedly an icon. Absolutely.
And I think the most important thing you said is that their their job is not to conduct traffic, their job is to keep the students safe. And I think all the crossing guards do a fantastic job of that. So thank you for the training you give them and thank you for.
We've, we just just recently went through, we retrained all of our crossing guards just this year. It's a two-year cycle that we go through and and we retrain them through our insurance carrier providers, training for them. And, you know, we try to support them and give them, you know, whatever they need. We we talk to them and get their input on on the matters that that come up. If there's an issue or if there's a concern, they are, they are very much, they they are critical to our success and to our being, you know, keeping everybody safe and keeping things moving as it should.
And ours as well, as a school district, so. The kids don't get to us safely, which is the point of us being there.
And while you're up there, chief, I just want to thank you for your partnership with the schools. It's great seeing you outside of our buildings at at games. We just really appreciate, you know, the partnership that we have.
Very much our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, well, the last item, and maybe we can just zip through it in case anyone had questions and maybe we've said enough, was the myriad ways in which we we do cooperate. Certainly, there's some friction here and there, but, you know, we have tremendous exchange of services for athletics, for camps, for day camp, for the like, the police services, as you already described. Our cops are are there all the time, not just responding to incidents, but to be fixtures and to be present and to and to interact. Our youth officer, Pleasantville High School graduate is is often in the schools as well. And PCTV and and the web services are again a service that the school participates in vehicle fuel, we share equipment. Pleasantville Strong obviously has lots of you guys involved.
And you're the fiscal agent.
And we are the fiscal agent, so. Anybody have something more to say? We're down to only three attendees on Zoom. A few people, have we lost any?
Can I add one little thing really quickly?
You can add whatever you want.
Go into this, but I just wanted to let you know that we have this thing called Climate Smart Communities, which is sponsored by the state, where we're looking at the carbon footprint of the village, trying to reduce our carbon footprint and look for, you know, some of you may know, there's a international con- conference happening in Glasgow right now to look at the impact of climate change. So I just want to let you know, we have a number of green initiatives happening right now and we would love to communicate with the school district about this and share some of what we're doing. One of the things that we're doing right now or we're looking into that we're going to be finding out more about at our next meeting is something that was created by Sustainable Westchester called Community Solar, which allows you to support solar farms locally and get a reduction on your electricity bill at the same time. So it's a a win-win kind of situation. So I I just wanted to throw that out there and say I would love to have communication with the district about the things that we're working on and maybe partner on some of the things we're doing. So keeping that brief.
Would you, going forward, would you be looking for a a school board liaison to that committee?
Sure, that would be great. Yeah. You're on the email, are you?
I am, I am, but not in that capacity.
Yeah, but yeah, we, that would be great.
Okay, so that's something that we can take up and discuss.
All right, anybody else on either board have anything to throw into the mix at this moment?
I think that was more than enough.
I think so. Any of our Zoom attendees or anyone in the room have anything to say? Good, bad, or indifferent? I see no raised hands on Zoom and I see no raised hands in the room.
Thanks for having us.
So, so Tina, HVAC is going to be a big subject for the next joint meeting.
Do you want to get up and introduce yourself? We would love to.
Please do.
This is Dr. DeSaw, she's the incoming superintendent. She'll be starting January 1 after Mary retires.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us and thank you for the joint venture. I am, I started last Monday, so I'm a week old in Pleasantville terms. And everything that we spoke about this evening, about the collaboration, the focus on children and working together to make sure that our students have everything that they need, is really a good reason for why I was so interested in coming to Pleasantville and the capacity of being the next superintendent of the school district. So I am just honored to be here, had a great first week and looking forward to many, many more. So thank you so much.
Well, you have our full support in trying to make good on the premise that brought you here.
Welcome.
So I'm hoping that we close the joint meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so what are you guys going to now take like a three or four minute break while we reset the room?
I think we should just jump right into it and get out of Dodge. What do you say, guys?
You want to just go right into the, so maybe I'll just pass this mic over and this.